All right, let's call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, July 23rd. If I could ask everyone to please stand and accept the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and the United Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everybody. Roll call please.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Pat Grudy.
Here.
Lisa Hassel.
Here.
Kevin Huber. Scott Louves.
Here.
Karen Lundstedt.
Here.
Okay, so we've got everybody tonight. Um, the agenda, we'll have, we'll open up for public comment. We'll have a brief superintendent's report covering a number of items. We will vote on the consent vote agenda, which was reviewed just a few minutes ago. Um, we'll have a brief update from Facilities and Finance, a brief update from Program Personnel. Um, Scott, I don't think today they have no properties, huh?
Nope.
Okay. And CeeLo.
Kristin.
Brief update, okay. Jim, anything from IASB?
No.
No? Okay. And then, uh, we will convene an executive session after this meeting, um, related to appointment of vacancy on the school board, five ILCS 120 slash two C three. Okay? And then we return to open session. And just to clarify, no action other than to reconvene the open session, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so I'll open it up to anyone in the public who would like to speak.
Hi guys, Anna Dre, 1020 Ashley Lane. Um, so now that I am the proud parent of two LHS graduates, um, I, I wanted, I've addressed you guys many times, and I specifically wanted to take time to thank you for building a school district that gave my sons a great education. And, um, I know it takes a lot of your personal time and a lot of your effort, and we're grateful. Thank you. Oops. And my net just flipped upside down. Um, I'm grateful for a relationship that you guys have always had with us as parents and taxpayers, and, um, we have a saying in scouting that feedback is a gift. Not always the easiest gift, not always the most pleasant gift, but you guys were always really open to it, and everybody knows that. And I think that's for the better of the school department. To that end, um, y'all know we struggled this year with the MAC department. I had to sit down with our principal, Tom, at the end of the school year. I feel a hundred percent confident that he took all, not just our experience, but his first year, and sees areas that things can be done better. And, um, um, I'm, I'm grateful that you guys have a principal who, who's gonna do that. Um, I also wanted to tell you guys that I'm really glad to see that you are responsive to the village and the mandate they gave you to work on parking. You've listened to parents for at least the eight years I've been coming to meetings, um, to village members, people in Sunset, people in Blueberry Hill. I know the easy thing to do would've been kick the can down the road, and you didn't do that. Thank you. Um, wishing you guys the best of luck tomorrow night. I will either support you. Um, I do want to encourage you guys, you have an awesome, you've got a great board, very talented people, ready to go. You have a hidden gem that has not been tapped yet. Tom Kalentus has already achieved the status of beloved in this community, and he's got a lot of political capital. Cash some of it in, use them tomorrow. That's all, I'm gonna do my recommendation to you guys. All right, the last thing I want to do tonight, and I wish Tom was here, but he's not, this is not going home with me.
That's an old clock.
Where do you think it came from, Scott?
The frame.
Who said that? Ding ding ding. Literally, me and somebody who shall ever remain nameless.
You stole it.
May or may not have actually removed this right before demolition. Um, it doesn't belong in my garage. Yeah, it belongs, I think, in my garage.
You're moving it right here.
So, um, property.
That's good.
I think that would be a cool thing.
Uh, I feel like that plastic, like.
No, it's, it's.
That's awesome.
That's a clock from your, that's a clock from your algebra class.
I think we need a motion to put this on top of the, uh, wood, uh, concrete we have outside the Brainerd Field.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
All right, there you go.
Thank you guys for everything you did for my students and for for you.
See how happy you are? See how happy you are?
It's my son that's a restoration partner. And you wouldn't have it last month, except for I ran over to the parking.
All right, you were at the other man.
Anyone else would like to speak?
Thank you, Anna.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, superintendent's report.
Okay, on the superintendent's report tonight, uh, even though it's summer, we always have good news. At District 128, the following D-128 students have been selected to be part of the 2019 All-State Production of, in the Heights, from VHHHS, McKenzie Furlitt Ensemble, Sarah Gluck Ensemble, Sari Gluck Ensemble, Bella Pineda Crew, Hannah Merrick Pitt, David Rosales Pitt, and Kyle Johnson Pitt, and from LHS, Clarice Austin, Cast Ensemble Dance Captain, Laura Hines, Crew and Props, and Albert Sterner Cast Ensemble. The show will be presented as part of the 2019 Illinois High School Theater Festival to be held January 10th through the 12th at the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. Produced by the Illinois Theater Association, the IHSTF is the largest and oldest non-competitive high school theater festival in the world. The following VHHHS students received honors at the FPLA National Competition, held earlier this month in Baltimore. Anmol Peranda, third place in Management Information System, Sarah Weisblatt and Rachel Chung, sixth place in Hospitality Management, Daniel Shang, uh, eighth place in Cybersecurity, and Thomas Florian, ninth place in Help Desk. Congratulations to all of the VHHHS and LHS FPLA members who qualified and competed at Nationals. Um, ten D-128 Special Olympians qualified for the Illinois Special Olympic Summer Games, held June 15th to the 17th in Bloomington Normal. D-12 athletes who competed and earned honors were Anna Scholler, bronze medal in Bocce Ball, Vinnie Roberts, fifth place in the 50-meter dash, Charlie Halpern, fifth place in the 50 meters, Andrew McCarthy, fifth place in the 50 meters. Unfortunately, six of our state qualifiers were unable to compete due to the 105-degree temperatures that forced the cancellation of several events for safety reasons. Congratulations to the athletes who were unable to compete. Krista Rose, Alexa Donato, Hope McEladdy, Joseph Mahler, Chris Morrison, and Mallory Marvin. We're proud of all of you for qualifying for state. Uh, next on the superintendent's report is the LHS Pool Project Update. Mark.
Mark Koopman.
Um, moving along with pool, uh, we had the South Grade Beam installed. It was poured by the West Connection area, uh, of the existing building. Um, the West Storm Drainage picking up existing, uh, roof drainage for the West Gym, and in that area, uh, that was, uh, all connected up. Um, it is now, uh, going out into the pond area, our detention area. Um, installation of steel structure and long-span, uh, steel joists, uh, has started. Um, they have commenced putting decking on the east end of the structure, so brick work can start as soon as possible. Um, estimated completion would be mid to late August with the steelwork. Um, and then directional boring, uh, work for the campus ATO and the power feed for the new Aquatic Center, uh, is in progress.
Superintendent Lee.
Any questions?
Board member Scott Louves.
Still on budget.
Yes, we are still on budget.
Still on budget, so June, we spent $500,000, and so total for the project, we spent about 5.5 million out of the 21.5 million, which is about 16 million left to be spent in fiscal year 19. So we may not end up spending all of it, but we're, seem to be tracking right along.
Yeah.
Late spring, late spring opening. Late spring of 19.
Spring 19.
Yep, still on target. So, on budget and on target so far. So it's getting very exciting as they start to put the brickwork up. It's gonna be really, uh, very exciting. Um, anything else on that, guys? Okay, great. Um, next is proposed, uh, additional 69 space LHS parking plan. Uh, we just want to report to the public that, um, a team from District 128, uh, which will include a couple board, uh, members as spokespeople, uh, myself, Dr. Kalentus will be at the meeting, uh, tomorrow night, um, as well as our architect and engineer. Uh, we suspect some, uh, parents who have had an interest in this, uh, project will be at the Village Board, uh, to review, uh, and then recommend, uh, proposal for 69 additional sparkings, parking spaces, um, at Libertyville High School next year. Bo, do you have the two diagrams? Um, just want to point out a couple of things, and I won't go through, you know, comments that we're gonna make, uh, to the, uh, Village Board, uh, but we have a couple diagrams we want the public, uh, to see, couple of drawings.
A map of the LHS campus with new parking highlighted is on the screen.
Okay. Uh, Stuart, you want me to stay here or go up here? What's easiest?
It doesn't make any difference.
Just to stay here. Okay, so what we want to point out here is the, uh, original plan that was approved as part of the pool plan was for perpendicular parking spaces along, uh, the new West Drive that's gonna be configured.
And that was approved, right?
That was approved as part of the site development plan of the swimming pool. And so after review by District, uh, by, uh, Village Professional Staff and our staff here, uh, we came to the conclusion that this configuration was not the safest configuration, uh, because if you look here, the drive is now a two-way drive coming in and out, and the parking is along that drive in their perpendicular spot. So it makes it very challenging with traffic, particularly during high times during the day, for teenagers as well as adults, frankly, um, to pull out of those perpendicular parking spots, uh, and, um, uh, to be able to get those. So, uh, the alternative was, you can go, Bo, um, to the next one. The parking lot that we've worked on with the Village Professional Staff, uh, this has been tweaked, as the board knows, um, you know, along the way, um, really moves these parking spaces to the west side of the drive, and this is a self-contained, uh, parking lot, uh, that will include 69 spots. You'll notice, if you can't see the detail, that these will be angled, uh, spots, and we have entrances that make, uh, logical sense. Um, the plan meets all of the Village Code requirements, was endorsed by the Village's Professional Staff. So, uh, we'll be talking about the details of this plan and why this is the best plan, as opposed to some alternatives that people have thrown forward, like, uh, the open space, typically called the sand volleyball courts, uh, build a parking garage, those kinds of things. So, uh, the board has studied this issue for a year along with us, and has developed an expertise in this. This plan was unanimously, uh, adopted and endorsed by the school board after their long study as, uh, being the most efficient, uh, the safest configuration, the most fiscally responsible configuration, and again, uh, one that meets code in our work with the Village staff. Uh, so the Village Board meeting tomorrow night is a regular Village Board meeting. It will be at 8:00 PM at, uh, Village Hall. Uh, they will be considering, uh, the plan tomorrow night. Our understanding is they will not be voting on the plan. That will come in, uh, a meeting two weeks after that. So, uh, that's just a basic overview, and, uh, would give the public who hasn't seen, uh, these documents like the board has, an idea, um, of, um, the difference between the two, uh, configurations and why we're recommending, uh, this. The original parking, Bo, if you could bump back there for a minute? The original parking here is 62 spaces, and Bo, now if you want to bump forward again, uh, this configuration is, uh, 69 spaces, and it will also allow, not only will it help the multiple events that we have at, at Libertyville High School, including, uh, events at the new swimming pool, uh, but it will allow, uh, all seniors who, uh, meet the criteria to park and want to park, uh, on campus the following year. And I'll make one final point, uh, because we spend a lot of time on fiscal responsibility, um, you know, as part of our work with the board and the board's work, uh, with us, um, that, um, as we look at this project, it's roughly $700,000 for, uh, the project, and the board felt, and we felt, uh, that was a significant investment, but an important investment, uh, in terms of adding, uh, these additional parking spaces. So that's where we're at on that right now. Uh, and again, uh, team will, uh, do a review, uh, answer questions and make a recommendation to Village Board tomorrow that they come back in a couple of weeks and, uh, actually adopt the plan, but it is within Village, all existing, um, Village Code.
And that's parking right next to the pool, right? Yeah, go back, Prince, go back to the red and explain that again. Go back to the red, thank you. Can you point out where the, cause we lost 40 spots. I believe we lost 40 spots, and I think we're putting 38 back in. You want to point to where those 38?
Mark.
I think they're right in there.
They're right in there.
I believe.
They're shadowed, they're very shadowed, but they're right in here.
So that has nothing to do with the red, so those are just.
Completely different.
We're net down two, by just doing the.
Actually, the original parking was in front of the administration building.
Right.
So this 40 was, was approved, this 40 right here was approved with the, the site, site plan originally.
Okay, so that ones.
Those are still in.
So those are.
Those are still in.
Those are happening.
Period. Those are happening, period. The only change is we can go to, to number two, Bo? The second drawing? This lot, instead of 40, will be actually 38. Because we need two, uh, handicap spots for the 69. So we put the handicap spots in there, and obviously, you know, two handicaps.
For a parking space.
Sure. Yeah, so this, the, the original lot that was 40 will be 38, and then there's 40 in this one-way directional, uh, parking, and then there's 39. There's, there's 39.
39.
On the perpendicular, and there's a six-foot buffer. Forty and, oh, sorry, 20.
Twenty, that's why I say 20. By the way, can I just point out too, because, again, the, the first way was all perpendicular parking. This has 40 here, and then you still have the 29 that are perpendicular, but there's a big difference in this diagram versus the perpendicular on the other one.
Correct. There's a six-foot buffer. There's a six-foot additional buffer built into those spaces for, uh, people to be able to, uh, walking space and additional back-out space to see traffic.
So you may not necessarily have to back out onto the road when you're pulling outside.
Right, exactly.
But the walking space is the same space, it's not on the other side.
Yeah, it's on this side, right.
That kind of weight.
Right. Okay.
And the other thing I was gonna say, I believe you talked about fiscal responsibility, that the $700,000, well, let me rephrase this. Every option that we looked at, other than this option, would be at least two and a half times greater cost than this option.
Okay, go back, Bo, for a minute.
Go back to the red.
Okay, so, uh, on this diagram, because this is not shaded out, so when people talk about using, we call it the open space left on campus, some people call it the sand volleyball lots, the cost of doing the spaces here is approximately one point, to Scott's point, is approximately 1.6 million dollars. It was suggested to us, uh, by a resident in Blueberry Hill, that we simply go ahead and do this project, spend the 1.6 million dollars, and five years from now, if we need that space, as part of open space, because it's the last open space that's buildable on the Libertyville High School campus forever, okay? So, um, the suggestion was, well, let's just spend the 1.6 million dollars, put the parking spaces in there, okay? Uh, and then five years from now, let's say, spend another $200,000 to tear it out. So you're looking at $2 million. Uh, we don't believe, and the board doesn't believe, that that is the best use of taxpayer dollars, and the board would certainly be, and rightly be criticized, for spending that money, knowing that this area of the property, uh, might need to be developed at some point in the future.
Well, and it would take your parking situation back to ground zero.
Right.
All of a sudden, you'd be left with, again, not a parking solution.
Right.
Where this is a permanent, or not this, but the proposed is a permanent resolution, because there's nothing else that could be built there.
The other suggestion was to put a, uh, parking garage on campus, either where the main lot is right now, uh, or to build behind the football field out toward the, um, tennis courts and the softball field. That is all wetlands designated, okay? So there is no construction going to be happening in that part, and if you look at the main lot, uh, most recent, uh, the second parking garage that the Village built several years ago was 8.7 million dollars. So our estimate of, uh, inflation construction, would, it would be about $10 million to build that parking garage. Uh, the board, uh, the district has other capital, major capital needs, uh, across the district, and the cost per space of a parking garage is astronomical, um, moving forward. So, um, those are some of the other alternatives that I'll be addressing that, that folks have suggested. Let me come back to this. The board has studied this with the administration and our professional staff, architects and engineers, for over a year, okay? We've looked at all of those individual options, we've costed those options out, we've looked at the long-term, um, plan, if you will, uh, for the campus, and leaving, uh, the last open space available for a future board and a future administration, uh, to be able to use, as we continue to work toward procuring, um, other properties across the street as well. Um, and I just want to underscore again, that, um, our plan, um, has accepted all the stipulations in working with the Village over the last many months, um, on this, and the plan is within Village Code. Yes, Kevin?
Has this, the, let's just call this the red plan, has this been approved by the Village?
As, as part of the site plan, Mark, originally?
As part of the site plan development, this is, the, all that parking was approved for code-required parking to build the building.
Okay, so.
So we are breaking, we are breaking that code-required parking up into two different, instead of being one project, we are breaking it, we are asking to amend our, our, uh, site plan permit and break it up into two projects. The 69, and then the, the rest of the parking spaces would still be, uh, held for, uh, code-required parking, land bank.
Land banking.
I guess where I'm going with this, though, is if the Village, and again, I'll ask you a second, second question, follow-up question, but if the Village is just interested in proving the, approving the yellow plan, is this red plan in place and to be implemented? Because it's already been passed.
No, it was passed as one total project. So we would have, what we've done is taken that project, that initial, that initial plan was code-required parking. That was the original Phase Three. So we've gone back and, and asked to amend our site plan permit into a Phase Three, which is our proposed parking, and Phase Four, which is the parking south on our last piece of open land, the property.
Let's back up, I'm confused.
Yes.
So the original plan, the parking that was improved, is it the red plus the thing in front of the pool?
Correct.
So, but what was in front of the pool was always said to be a future project.
Yes.
Correct.
Pat said about this.
It was code-required parking.
All right, but they, but we told them we weren't gonna do that right away.
Correct, and then we were asked to.
So given that, back to his question, though, does that mean that we could still build the red plan without any further approvals?
No, because it was approved as one total project.
One project.
That would be a change just to do that.
Meaning the red plus the stuff in front of the pool?
Yeah. Correct.
I don't remember if we agreed to do it from.
Yeah, that was the original, the land bank is.
Yeah, but we were gonna, we were gonna land bank it, but we're land banking it, we're gonna do it at a future, future time.
So we still would've done it at a future time.
If we land banked it, which, at least my definition of that is, we're gonna do it later, can we build the red stuff?
Well, we can.
Well, let me, let me answer that question, because there's a more base answer to that. The Village staff nor we would recommend that we build this. That's the answer to the question. This is, we believe, and the Village Professional Staff believes this is not safe.
But I, I think the question that we're trying to get to is, if for some reason the yellow plan doesn't pass, can we move forward with this plan in exchange? Rather than having no plan, can we move forward with this plan without further approval?
With the red plan.
Well, my recommendation is, I, I believe it's a moot question, because we would not recommend that we build this.
I understand, but we could. It's been approved to the point where we could build those.
I, I think Mark's trying to explain that we can't.
We can't, because that was approved as a total project. All those.
But what's that project? What is?
Approved the total.
What, the project is land banking the stuff in front?
Just like we always said.
Right?
Correct, and, and we, we had to go, go back to the Village Board, uh, with the plan, and our plan was to break the future code-required parking up into two different phases.
That was always the plan, wasn't it?
That was, that's what we are going to the Village Board for tomorrow.
No, but again, when they originally approved the pool.
Yes.
Did they require us to do the parking in front of the pool at the time we did it, at the time we were gonna open the pool?
No, we, we land banked it, we put in our 40 spaces, replacing what was by the administration building.
Right there.
And then, this is code-required parking for.
Yeah, I know, I know.
This is code-required parking for the square footage of the building, per code. So we land banked this as one project. So if you were to build it at this time, you would have to build the, all those parking spaces that are on.
So even red is land banked for future parking?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's all, yes, that's highlighted to let you know how we're splitting the project into.
Hundred percent, that's where, I think, I was mistaken, and I'm so sorry. The red is land banked, and the front is land banked for future parking. Now we're asking to implement yellow.
Oh, Joe, yeah, thank you.
We're asking to implement yellow. So now, now the view is, why do we, since it is our, I've been asked this many times, that's your property, Kevin, why does the Village need to approve anything on your property, one?
That's a good question.
Could you're more than 10 acres?
Well, eh, again, I don't know how, if we're within zone, I'm not sure how somebody could tell me what to do on my property. Can you address that, please?
Well, yes, a couple of years ago, the law changed in the state for building schools and building things around schools, as a result of a unfortunate situation where Crystal Lake South High School, where they built 55 high-foot, 100-yard-long, uh, bleachers next to a subdivision, and didn't have a conversation with anybody about that. Uh, the end result was, after a number of court cases, uh, the school district had to tear those bleachers down, at a substantive cost. The legislators in that area sponsored legislation in Springfield, in both the House and the Senate, that would, um, require that school districts, as a government entity, now work, uh, closely through their local villages and follow all codes, uh, if you will, and all processes for building. In the past, for example, when Vernon Hills was built, Classroom Edition was done at Libertyville, and this is simplifying it a bit, uh, but in essence, uh, the school district would work with their professional staff, get the plan together, have the board approve it, and they would go over to the Regional Office of Education, who was the guardian of school construction, okay? Uh, those of you that have been in the community for a while will remember that when Brainerd was finally closed, it was closed by the Regional Office of Education, okay? It was not closed by the Village of Libertyville, because they had jurisdiction over that facility as a school facility. So now, within the last two years, when we do building or construction, like we did with the pool, like we did with Brainerd, we have to go through the regular Village processes, which includes, um, all the development committee meetings, um, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a different process than it was a couple of years ago. Um, at the end of the day, I think, Kevin, we would all agree with that assumption that if we have met Village Code, and it's on our property, that, um, you know, we, we have the inherent right, if you will, to be able to, um, do that construction. So I think that's a legitimate question from, uh, a local taxpayer.
Thank you.
Prince, I had you two quick questions.
Um, Pat said.
Go ahead.
The, I'm not, I love your plan, the HUD sales due tomorrow. Um, everybody keeps hammering on putting the parking in the front of the building. That lot that you showed on the other plan, how many spots, would, how many spots can be in front of the building?
Uh, go back, Bo. Mark, 104.
Um, I don't remember offhand.
I think it's between 130, I think it's 120.
That would be the red thing, just in the front.
Here, here. This is the front part.
That would be 140 spots?
130, 120 to 130, I think.
Plus the red?
Is the number, no, no, no.
No, no, no.
No, 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 just this.
Right.
Just on the, just on the open, just on the open land.
So that's why the cost is almost double, because you're getting almost double.
Yes.
So, I just, I'm, as we complain about parking, I'm sure somebody's gonna go, I know aesthetically, please can we get the double spots? So I hope.
Okay, yeah, and let's, and let's go back and make a couple of points again, um, you know, with that, and that is, the cost of this lot in today's dollars is about 1.6 million, okay? If we want to, if the board wants to develop this area, or needs to develop that area, last buildable area on campus, in the next few years, it's going to cost $200,000 to tear that lot out. So, $1.6 million in today's dollars, not five years from now, at four to six percent construction inflation cost, plus the $200,000 to tear it out. So, we'll spend, if you want to round it up, $2 million, put that lot in, and conceivably tear it out again in three, five, six years.
And have no better parking.
And, and we have no further resolution to the parking problem that we have today when we do that.
All right, so, Mark, one more question, though, just to clarify. The original plan was to build the pool and only do this parking here.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, basically, if you want to look at this again, replacing the spots that were already by the old administration building, okay?
They had four, we were replacing four.
Okay, and then this parking and this parking went to the landbanking.
I wasn't on the channel.
Right, and then finish up with the yellow one again, please. And so, again, this plan moves us off state, meets code, because we are, we are back of the fifty-foot setback that's required by the village. It was suggested by some of the residents at the last meeting that they would prefer a wood fence as opposed to a, a landscaper. And we stipulated, Scott, on our, on the district's behalf, stipulated that we would be happy to put a wood fence in there, and we'll have to do some landscaping on our side of the fence, but we will gladly do that as part of the process. So, we think it's, again, it's the most efficient use of the space we have, it's safe, okay? It's more cost-effective, and it is within code, and we appreciate the work that Mark and the team and our professional staff, architect and engineer have done with this. We also, and I want to say this on record for all of us, we also appreciate the work that we've done with the professional staff at the village. Mark has a great working relationship with them, they have actually been good partners in this process, and again, recommended this plan to the appearance review committee and the plan commission, and we're hoping that the village board, after we go through the review and we answer questions, will see the wisdom of the recommendation of putting the parking here.
Yeah, I guess in the interest of transparency, for those who don't know, the, what are they called?
Plan commission.
The plan commission rejected it, right?
Yeah, the plan commission voted for, against, and two in favor of the plan.
So, so, we have an uphill battle there, but I think it still makes sense.
I have one last quick question.
Sure.
The gentleman who has encroached twelve feet onto our land and built a liability that fire pit, are you guys going to get that car?
I don't think we've formally decided anything, but we're still discussing that.
Okay, I mean, it's a hazard, so if a kid falls on it, we know about it now, so...
Okay.
Yes, we do.
Good job.
Okay. Any other questions?
All right, so tomorrow, eight o'clock, and just one question, did we clarify, as we, any and all of us can show up, correct?
Uh, yes, only two board members can act as spokespeople on behalf of the district when indicated, and we would suggest that Scott be primary and then Pat be secondary.
But anybody can speak as a resident, but not as a district?
Uh, no, no, no. They can attend the meeting, they should not engage the board on this issue, the village board, okay? All right, so, any other questions on that? Okay, thank you for your time. FY19 EdRed membership, and just as a review for the board, EdRed is one of the largest school advocacy groups in the state, and it's up in the six-county metro Chicago area. One-twenty-eight has been a member of that group for many, many years. EdRed has helped us a number of times advocate for school positions with legislators, in the governor's office, and so, tonight, you will be approving, or I'm going to recommend that you approve the FY19 EdRed membership for Community High School District 128. So, we'd be looking for a motion.
How much is that, do you know?
Five.
Five, I thought it was five, yeah, okay. Okay, is there a motion to approve the EdRed membership for fiscal year 2019?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Batson?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Hessel?
Aye.
Huber?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, and last from me tonight, as we had three freedom of information requests this month, and as we're required to do now, we'll read those into the record. We received a request on seven, two, eighteen, from Adam Fondell, requested application and supporting materials for Mary Edley Allen, compensation and benefit information for Mary Edley Allen for all available years and personnel file of Mary Edley Allen. Follow-up was Brian Kelly and Dan Stanley. The response date was seven, nine, eighteen, the deadline was seven, ten. On seven, thirteen, eighteen, Robert Bussie from Amalgamated Transit Union in Silver Spring, Maryland, requested the following information, the revenue agreement with First Student for the provision of fixed route services, including all addenda, amendments, attachments, exhibits, and extension, the RFP that led to the aforementioned contract, including any addenda, amendment, attachments, and exhibits, and all bids in response to the aforementioned RFP, including the BAFO of the winning bid. And finally, on seven, nineteen, eighteen, Patrick Garrity of IBEW Local 150 in Libertyville requested that we send via email the names of all contractors working on science lab renovations under general contract, Contractor FBG Corporation. Also, please include a copy of the electrical license for the electrical contractor on site. Dan did the follow-up. Response is pending, and we have a deadline until seven, twenty-six. And let me jump back to Mr. Bussie's request. The response date from us was seven, eighteen, by Dan, and the deadline was seven, twenty, eighteen. And Pat, that is, concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, consent vote agendas listed, we reviewed it earlier this evening. Can I ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as you stated?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Grudy?
Aye.
Hessel?
Aye.
Huber?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Hessel?
Aye.
Huber?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Hessel?
Aye.
Huber?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
All right, second item, need to vote on the resolution, and this is a policy update to regulate expense reimbursements for board policies to 125, and this is on board member compensation expenses and five-dash-sixty expenses.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments?
I was just going to review again that the state now requires us to have this policy in place. Every year, this will be an annual event. It's essentially the same language that we had in the policy last year, and so, this is the time of year to do that.
All right, so we already have motions, and can we do roll call?
Huber?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Hessel?
Aye.
Huber?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Hessel?
Aye.
Huber?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Grudy?
Aye.
Hessel?
Aye.
Huber?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye. All right, motion carries, and again, we won't take any action after the executive session, other than reconvene the open session until we can...
So, you're turning.
All right, thanks, good night, everybody.